Start the meeting, call of order. And at this time, turn it over to Dr. Trecker Miller for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce our Middle States visiting team chair, Dr. John Conley from Sussex County Community College in New Jersey. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Trecker Miller. So as Greg just indicated, my name is John Conley. I'm the president of Sussex County Community College in northwestern New Jersey. Just commenting that the environment there is very much like you folks have here. I had the very same weather I woke up to that we're looking at right now. So this is a sort of familiar territory. Sussex County Community College is a college very much like yours. And it's one of the reasons, I think, that I was selected to serve as the chair for the visiting team. Middle States tries to marry those folks who are leading the site visitations to those individuals understand the unique challenges of being a small rural community college in the northeast. And they are unique. I mean, as you folks probably know, there's a whole Rural Community College Alliance that exists. And that's a nationwide entity. The challenges that small community colleges, rural community colleges have, they are unique. And they have been compounded by demographic changes in rural environments. And they've been also impacted by recent, a recent, I don't know, experience with COVID, right? So I am most pleased to be here. I'm really happy to serve in this capacity. I think my job today and what I asked Greg for this time to do was to convey to you, A, introduce myself to you. I'm going to be leading the team. Leading the team, I do have an oversized influence on how the team sort of functions and looks and feels. My responsibility is to exercise leadership and set the tone for that team. And that can be very important. Up to this point, I've had really good teams that I've worked with. And that's not always the case, that you have a uniformly good team that comes to visit. And I'm just going to briefly communicate to you, you know, when things are great and right and when things sort of go off the rails. This is, this is a high-stakes phenomenon, to be sure. But the idea is that it's supposed to be useful and helpful, all right? Middle States and the purpose of accreditation is to provide institutions of higher education with an avenue for external peer review. We all would like to be evaluated in one way or another by folks who understand what we do and so forth. I'm a biologist, so I would hate for any article that I were to write in biology to be evaluated by an economist, okay? This is the same sort of thing. Higher education, community colleges in higher education, this point in time, and rural community colleges in higher education, all of that is to be taken seriously. And so the idea is to select a team of individuals who understand those challenges and will be able to assess what's happening here by virtue of the self-study that you have written and to verify that what you have written down actually represents what they see and experience too. It's not so much to say, "We're coming for a site visit. The site visit is everything." The site visit is only a piece of it. And the most important thing is the verification and validation of what the self-study team, the steering committee, and those other contributors have put down on paper to describe it. Big thing in the self-study is about the evidence. You need evidence to support the things that you assert in the self-study, which of course is happening right here. There's a body of evidence. It's called the inventory of evidence, so to speak. And the site team that I will be coming with will be very interested in that. So there will be that evidence inventory. We'll be looking at that. We will be familiar with the document that you folks submit. You'll be familiar with the design, the process by which you did this. In the early days of accreditation, sometimes this is how it would go. "Oh, my God, we've got a year and a half before the accreditation team comes to visit us." Hire a consultant, and they'll write a self-study for us. Now, that doesn't fly. It just doesn't pass the straight face test. And so that just doesn't happen anymore. And we know that by, in part, in Middle States, by having, "What was the self-study design? How did you do this? How do you plan on doing it?" And that's sort of a piece of the culture of the peer review process. As I mentioned, my objective with this site visit in setting the tone is to help the visiting team understand the principle of being helpful and useful. And that sort of pragmatic and also philosophical, those two things are present, is particularly important because site visitors, they take this very seriously. This is an allocation of time. They know how important it is. They know how important it is to the commission. They know how important it is to you. And it has strong implications for what happens in your work ahead for the next eight years or so. So therefore, some of them take this too seriously. As in, they go too far. They make claims. They get too rigid. They 430, okay? And I think that what you were expressing just tonight was an objection to that type of micromanagement. It isn't useful or helpful to keep you on a leash. You can't be creative, and you cannot bring your all when you're in that situation. That's just the facts of human nature. And so we don't want to have a visiting team here doing the very same thing to this institution. So I am to be sort of the leader and gentle watchdog to ensure that that does not happen. We have seven standards, as you folks know. The most important one, from this body's point of view, will be standard six. It's about the resources and structure that is to support the mission of the institution. And I'm pleased to say that that's generally okay. So that's, that's good. Some institutions, particularly in the SUNY system, the smaller rural community colleges, some of them are really, really struggling. And then that's, folks just zero right in on that, and that becomes a focus for the commission. But in addition, if that's not the case, then a tripwire would be standard five, which has to do the assessment of learning here at the college. So what we call student learning outcomes. And we need to ensure that students are learning what we think they're actually supposed to learn and that we have evidence to support it. And that when we collect that evidence, we use that evidence to improve what we're doing. It's a continuous quality improvement loop. And right now, we have a great deal of confidence overall in institutions of higher education, that they know about assessment, they think it's important, and they're doing it. What we don't have confidence is, is that they, they know that it's important and that they take the evidence and they make the necessary changes. And my team's going to be looking for evidence of that. And I will try to keep them under control so that they're not out of hand, all right? Because assessment of student learning is as much art as it is science. And when we over-science this phenomenon of how human beings encode and recall and use information, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's more difficult than people would like you to believe. It's, it's a different... So it's, it requires experts who are experienced in it, and it requires sort of an openness to the challenges. And to, on the site-visiting part of it, is to talk with the human beings, the faculty who are delivering this work, and get a sense. And the one thing they're going to be looking for is that the faculty here know that it's important, all right? And that they embrace that. We call it a culture of assessment. And we're going to be looking for whether this institution has a culture of assessment. And that's an honest assessment of what we're going to try to do. So the last thing I would just offer is, if you folks right now, when you've got me here, have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer those. But that's the nuts and bolts of it. I was pleased to tell Greg just about an hour ago that we have a little bit more information about who is going to be on that visiting team. I don't know yet, but they've only got two slots left to fill, and they're basically just looking for a response from the people they've invited, and they're looking for an affirmative response. So we're really close. When that is done, Middle States Commission on Higher Education will send you folks the list of that, and they'll be looking for conflicts of interest. That'll be one of the things. So if you folks see some members of the visiting team that you think would have some kind of a conflict of interest here with the college, you would want to flag that. You may, you may need to involve me, but probably not. And then we assume not, and then away we go. And then we'll be able to engage in some of the back and forth about the draft that you're submitting and about the process ahead. Glad to be here.
Has COVID affected any of the assessments, you know, as far as going forward?
No, I mean, I would say that institutions got a little bit more of, a little more latitude when we were doing that during the COVID process. My, my two visitations were Bloom County Community College and at, at Clinton.
Oh, yes, because like St. Rose, they were forced to close because, in Albany, because of COVID reduced the FTEs going to college and the revenue stream right up to the point where they overextended and had to actually close the college. So you talked about community colleges, some community colleges in the campus. So I don't know if that's a consideration when they do the evaluation.
But so the, the impact of COVID, do folks take that into consideration? Many do. I think that the CARES Act was intended to sort of provide relief. And my, my sense, incomplete sense, is that most institutions were actually able to squirrel money away because of the CARES Act. Most of the reserves at the community colleges that received CARES Act dollars actually went up during that period of time, even though the FTEs went down. So the status of the community colleges actually improved a little bit. The other improvement was that essentially the campuses shut down. When the campuses shut down, there's no heating, electrical bills, there's all kinds of, you know, the custodial stuff. You could reduce some of that if you were on contracted services. It's not really going to be any construction or improvement. So spending sort of stopped. Folks still delivered the mission, but some of the costs went down. So on, on balance, COVID did not really hit the pocketbook in that way, but it did interrupt momentum. FT went down, and there's some community colleges that were not able to bounce back as they would like to. And that's a residual impact. That's, that's still there for, for some. Some escaped it. Some rebounded right away. Others did not.
How many people are on your team that will be coming?
There will, there will be seven. It's my understanding. There'll be seven. One of those members will also be a vice chair. That's a relatively new phenomenon. And the structure of it is that each member of the team will have one chapter, one standard, that they are the first reader on. And they'll also have a second assignment where they're the second reader. So there is one individual leader for all of them. And then there is a backup who provides, you know, additional perspective on each standard that has read it and entirely understands and is thoroughly familiar with it. And the two of them go back and forth and write an initial impression of that, whether it meets or does not meet impressions, recommendations, commendations, those sorts of things. And then they, and then they compare notes. So when we arrive here, we will have already thoroughly reviewed the document. We will have a preliminary report, each one of us, for our first and second read. We will have shared that information with each other. And then when we come, we're verifying and validating our findings. So that's what we're doing. So the paper part of the process is significant. In addition, I have invited Deb Meckel, who is a member of the administrative team from, in academic affairs and in learning from the SUNY system. And I have had her join, and it's recommended that there be somebody for that purpose. And she will be observing the process. She has been phenomenal. She is a tremendous resource. SUNY system is more complicated than some places, certainly more complicated than New Jersey. And so it is very, very helpful to have her. So for example, the Gen Ed requirements in the SUNY system. It's, it's different than any place else, and it's, yeah, my point of view is a little complicated. So Deb is right there to sort of allow us to sort of navigate that, and we're through. Yes?
You mentioned something about tone, people being too rigid. You want people to be creative. I'm just curious, I'm coming into, and you said that several smaller colleges are struggling. How diverse is your team to come and handle the situation here at FMCC? I only ask because it seems to me, being an adult returning student, when I came back and thought things were going to be so proper, the more laid back that they were, more down-to-earth they were, the better the actual college has become. And when you talk about COVID, I think we're on a rise. As a student, the vibe that you have in the college right now is on fire. So I'm just wondering, I want to be able to go back and report to the Senate and the student body, "Oh, this guy's on point." What can you tell me to say?
I half understand what you're saying and asking. So you've got some, you've got some comments that I understand and appreciate. And we've experienced the same thing at my college. This year has been the most dynamic start since I've been a president there. I, I do not know what to attribute that to. But we are also on fire. It's just, the, the kids are alive. They're excited. They're, you know, it's just, it's tremendous. I mean, we have a buzz inside our Galleria that we never had since I've been the president there. So it's been just really phenomenal. We don't, we don't have a good explanation for it, but we love it, and we want to ride that wave as long as we can. You were asking a question about tone and about potential, potentially rigid members of the visiting team. Could you sort of clarify your question?
You had made it a point to say, "I'm just curious what you meant by that." I'm, I guess I'm trying to say, I'm not really sure what to expect when your team comes here. I would hope that I'm going to see a bunch of people I don't know, and I'm going to be, "Oh, look, that's, I know where they are. Let me walk up and say hello" and get that nice warm feeling versus sound, "Hmm."
My advice to you is be, my advice to you is be who you are. Be, be, you, you, yeah. I, I would be shocked if you have, they may be formal because they're highly professional. But I would be, I would be, I would be very surprised if you have someone who is cool. The cool, the coolest folks, the most standoffish folks, typically finance folks, okay? That's just kind of how they're wired. But, but, but there's also going to be someone who's going to be the visiting lead and chapter reviewer for, you know, student services. They tend to be the friendliest. So there are some stereotypes associated with, what I will tell you is that they will all be professional. But you and your response, this institution's response, should not be put on the makeup and put on a show. That is the worst thing that you could do because the, the inauthenticity that we will detect means you're hiding something, and you do not want to do that, okay? Or just, we, we've read the document, and we're looking to see the match between the document and who you folks are. How does this organization live and breathe? That's what we're, that's what we're doing. And we're looking for evidence for it, but the evidence is going to be all sort of accumulated. And we are here to verify and validate the evidence we already have.
Thank you.
Any questions? We thank you very much.
All right. Well, have a great meeting, and thank you so much for allowing me to spend a little time with you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait for them to come back. I said, "We'll wait for them to come back."
No, he's nice. He's a nice guy. He's a nice guy.
He seems to have...
Very, because they're similar to us up in this county. That's why. Yeah, it's going to be nice.
Okay. Public comments, new comments, any tonight? If not, approve all the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19th.
I, I make him...
Correction, motion?
Yes, correction, some correction, which I talked to Maria. Some of it is typo. And, you know, she's going to fix it. And then with that, I make a motion.
I have a motion, a second. Thank you. Trustee Perry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. Move on to the chair reports. I have a draft here. We, we had a motion last month concerning the resolution about employment, supervisory authority of the board trustees over the president. And NYCT also has a, a, a resolution that they proposed, and I, behalf of the board, signed it and sent it back to them. And it's basically the same resolution that we had. And I did discuss it, I believe, at the NYCT meeting. But just so you're all aware of it. For those who aren't aware of it, I, I mean, state, the New York Board trustees, state board trustees, they wanted, the chancellor wanted to be sole person to govern hiring of the president. He wanted to do the interviews. He wanted to do the evaluations of their salary pay and so forth. And we said, "No, that's, that's the job of the trustees."
Besides, they don't know the environment that we live, and they don't know anything. How could they find somebody?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And had the intention of attending the NYCT, but due to complications, well, I was unable to attend. But trustee Wilson did take some notes. If you would share them with the board.
Absolutely. And, and I'll tell you, the rest of the colleges were, they, they really asked some very pointed questions of the chancellor regarding this. And he stood right there, and he told them that in, in the state education system, there's an Article 126. I'm not familiar with it, but that's what gives him the authority. That's what he stood up and told us. Community colleges, and, and they definitely relayed this directly to him, are not feeling the love from SUNY. Community colleges feel penalized for their successes. They, they told them that, too. I was really impressed with, they spent quite a bit of time on talking about nursing and the criticality of the shortage of nurses that there are in the workplace. And it's not just New York State. It's all across the country. SUNY charges $295 per semester hour at Empire State College for nursing students. There's going to be $50,000 available per student for nurse practitioners beginning in March of next year.
$50,000 per student?
$50,000 per student, if they, that's an encouragement to sign up to take that. The Obama, they, they also was talking about the Obamacare costs $13 billion in New York State. Seven and a half billion is from New York State. Six billion of it comes from the feds. For 2024, New York State Department of Health budget is $101 billion. That's about six decimal places more than I'm capable of comprehending. $83 billion of that will be spent on Medicaid. In 2024, we have 7 million people in New York State on Medicaid. And something else that was very enlightening, Schenectady County Community College has built some mobile classrooms and they going around the state where, where they're, where they're needed. And that, that program has received a lot of accolades, and they are very busy. Those are the big things that I come away with. It was, I enjoyed it very much. Met a lot of nice people from different community colleges from across the state. And I actually shared the two days that I was there with the president of Niagara, that was a community college, him and one of his trustees. It was very nice.
It's great.
Thank you.
The reason, the reason that they are, they have lack of nursing, because after COVID, people, they stay home or they stop working, and they go as a locum. They pay them a lot more than if I was hired by a hospital or something like that. That's why they decrease their, they have. But they stay home, and they wait until they call, they get called. They get a lot more money.
Yeah, per diem.
They have to stop, put a stop to it and pass a law that it shouldn't be like that. Otherwise, they can create so many more. But if they want to stay home and use the same system, it doesn't do us any good.
That's right. That's right.
And regarding to, in the past, Dr. Trecker Miller, I'm sure you remember, when Dr. Swanger was in charge, and they tried to get the power in their hand. And, and then we objected to it, and the chairman of the board write a letter and all the trustee sign that if you need anything, you have to go through us because this is not in your criteria. Am I right, Dr. Trecker Miller?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. And, and we're going through a similar process right now. And, you know, the NYCT has collected these resolutions from each of the community colleges. They also created a petition.
Yeah, I don't too.
It was many years ago, and we watched them while they tried to...
And I understand that trustee Preston also attended?
I did, yeah. I just attended the Thursday session with PEPEC. More of a new trustee member day. It was very good. I learned quite a lot, and it was great to interact with other new board of trustees members. And also to hear that we aren't alone in a lot of the things that we're dealing with as community college. There, there were, I think, just in that session, it was maybe 10 or 12 other community college trustees from around the state. And I heard a lot of the same stories that we are dealing with. But also some of the rebounds that we've talked about just tonight with, you know, seeing the other side of COVID. And, and I was explaining to Greg before, my son actually started coming here in the fall, and he loves it. He, he really feels like the professors that he has are very knowledgeable. They're engaged. He's really impressed with it. And now it's just up to us to kind of get the word out to the local community and, and, you know, to prospective students that, hey, we've got a good thing here. So, yes, I enjoyed the conference a lot. And it taught me a lot about what it means to, to be a trustee of our local community college and, and the engagement piece of it. So looking forward to more of that.
Thank you. And I think we were the first college that forced a trustee-only meeting at the NYCT when we had issues before with, with the president. SUNY tried to come over, so... It's very informative, and I encourage that next year, when it comes up again, to consider attending once again. With that, we'll move on to the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And speaking of new trustees, you may have recognized you have a new, a new face with us this evening. Matthew Cole has, has joined us as our student trustee. And he's an addiction services major.
Yes.
And it's your second year. You're anticipating graduating in the spring, correct?
Yes.
You're from Amsterdam.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to share with the group?
Um, sometimes I ask a lot of questions.
That's good.
Sorry about anything. So if I overstep any boundaries, just let me know.
You have a right to ask any question you have in, in your mind. No question is a bad question.
I haven't heard some of my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
So we, you know, again, I had the opportunity to attend Friday, NYCT. That, the Friday sessions, and it was one of the better conferences they've had in the last few years. Our director of nursing, I think Casey, was part of a panel presentation on certain healthcare programs. So we were, we were well represented. Yesterday, we had the 10th anniversary of the PTEC program celebration here on campus. That was a nice event. It's hard to believe it's, it's been that many years. And nice turnout for that. We had over, over 1,000 eighth graders here on campus yesterday for CareerCon.
It's amazing.
We held in conjunction with BOSI's and Chamber. So that was, we had a number of employers here. This was much, it was much more interactive than job fairs had in the past. I mean, you know, they bought their equipment. They brought their, you know, brought things that demonstrated their, their particular industry. Schools did a nice job of prepping the students with questions to ask when they got to each one of the various employers. So that...
From which school mostly they were?
They, they were from our local BOSI districts. So the, I think pretty much everybody showed up from the 15-component school district. So like I said, there was over 1,000 eighth graders.
No, it was neat.
Had a good energy. Just this afternoon, next door, we had another job fair, Veterans Holdings, which is a cannabis, cannabis company that we've worked with in terms of internships and other co-ops was here. This is probably the third event they've had for us where they're hiring pretty, I mean, they're... Pretty, I mean, the room was full, so it was, it was really well attended. And earlier, this was last week, we had a town hall with the commissioner of education. It was actually next door, but we had the opportunity to meet with her for about an hour before she had her town hall session. And we, we talked a lot about the programming that we do here at the college and in collaboration with the BOSI's. And she had a lot of good questions for us and then she had a public session where she talked more about her agenda and what's happening with the Department of Education, some of the different changing standards with graduation requirements and, and some of the issues that they're dealing with. If you happen to come into campus the right way or the wrong way today, you would notice that we are underway with our first phase of the paving project. So they hit the ground, they really started mobilizing last week. We hit the ground running this week and started building pavement, picking up some of the drainage pipes and catch bases that they're replacing. So that works all on the backside of the campus and they anticipate being on campus for about three weeks. And then we'll be doing phase two in the spring and summer of next year. So, and then doing more the year after. So there's a lot to be done and we've got, started a lot sooner this year, but it's just the way the whole process works. So. That is, oh, also wanted to just share, for those of you who don't follow, our Olympic volleyball team continues to be phenomenal. They're 16-1, cruising toward regionals and the conference championship coming up. So, you know, fingers crossed that, you know, once again, they're able to go to the national tournament. And they've been very successful and very much.
Very good.
Excitement as well. Any questions, sir?
Yes, sir. When you do something like the CareerCon thing, being that it's like middle schoolers, are you just trying to let them know what kind of work is out there so they have an idea what to go towards in the future? Because I went there looking for a job myself. Okay, okay.
No, excellent point. Because we did, we did, the way that we had CareerCon set up was there was time for the eighth graders. There was time for us, for our college students as well. But to your point, yes, that for the eighth graders, it was really about starting to think about what's available and what, and what way, what pathways they can travel, whether that's, you know, they want to work for National Grid and how do you get there? Or they want to work in one of the other local industries that's represented? And what sort of educational pathway do you need to follow? So we, you know, the earlier we can hook them, the better. And then at the same time, we wanted the opportunity for our college students to go through. And so we had, after they were done, then that's when you guys had the chance to go over and employers as well. So.
Thank you. It was actually a nice function. Even the kids, I spoke with a couple of kids. I mean, a lot of people enjoyed that. So thank you.
Thank you.
What do we have? One of the best, one of the best?
Yeah. So they haven't, their season hasn't started yet, but they're, they're still a heavy team and we can talk about that executive session if need be.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Student, excuse me, college assembly report?
The college assembly report is in your packet. Steve was not able to join us this evening. So if there's any questions about happening with the assembly, happy to.
All right. We'll move on to student trustee report. Mike, Matthew, have anything?
Other than what I said earlier, no, the just college is on fire. The students is just great. It's a great place to be this semester.
Hey, thank you. And we'll move on to the foundation report. Trustee Gazi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seventeenth annual distinguished alumni dinner as well as fourth annual clock tower award dinner. It will take place at the Holiday Inn in Johnston, November 7. And if you didn't make your reservation, please get in touch with the Ms. Maria Ambasco or Mrs. Lanzi. And this year distinguished alumni award recipient, and there are Jane, Janie, Ginay, Ginay, Maroney and Brent Fetterplace, Jenny Rollson Fish. And these are, these are for the annual distinguished alumni. And we have the recipient for Clock Tower, which I think everybody is familiar with their name, Rick and Mary Frazier. They are very active in the community, very generous, and the Frazier Room is after them. And the invitation was May, October 2nd. I hope you get a chance to respond. Yes. Preferably. Foundation, they are celebrating 50 years of soccer, which started here. And on Saturday, November 2nd, they sent the attachment in our packet. It, you know, you can participate all of it or a part of it. And please get in touch with Foundation Office and let them know. Rollo Gallery is celebrating 25th anniversary and is a big deal. And Joe Chapin, which was the director and also one of the faculty of the FMCC, he was retired, as well as the present director of the gallery. They are talking about how it started to initially 25 years ago. During these 25 years, 41 artists, they exhibited their artwork. And from that, 41 people, artists, 14 of them right now, they have their art in the gallery. If you didn't look at it, up until November 4th is going to be displayed. And after that, is gonna, another artist, they're gonna display another artist's artwork. His name is Bill Wither?
Wider.
Wider, yes. I apologize. It's, the next, Kevin Jones, which the director of our athletic department with Mrs. Lanzi and Dr. Drucker Miller. They are getting together to work on the plan for the field, turf field in different phases. Fenmore Asset Management has endowed a third business related scholarship. Last but not least, you will receive the annual appeal early in December and as well as giving Tuesday is December 3rd. With that, if there is no question. Before Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for trustee Gazi?
If I cannot answer it, I forgot to ask Mrs. Lanzi, do you have any addition to my report? That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports with the finance president, Drucker Miller.
Chastity's at the, at one of the SUNY conferences today, so she couldn't be with us. And trustee Beck is at a budget workshop in Montgomery County, so you're stuck with me. The finance report is in your packet. There's, you know, we're early on in the fiscal year. What I would just mention is that our audit field work starts next week. So the, you know, the finance team's been working the last couple of months really to close out the year and gather all the documents necessary for the audit that starts next week so that we can, you know, have our meeting with the auditors. There is one motion for the board to consider this evening. We do have a budget transfer motion to redistribute some funds to cover, basically moving full-time salary to part-time salary. And so I need a sponsor for that motion.
Second? Second. Trustee Wilson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close during the night? Motion passed? Thank you. I will move on to building some grounds with trustee Landrio.
Just have a couple of things to point out in your written report packet. Dr. Drucker Miller already gave us an update on the start of the paving work that started. One other thing I want to bring to your attention, in the wastewater treatment plant, we had to make additional repair.
That feels like a standing item, doesn't it?
Yeah. And that's it. That concludes our report. If there's not any questions, Mr. Phil.
Any questions to trustee Landrio? If not, we'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Preston.
Thank you. Yeah. So right now, there are eight faculty members attending a 10-week fall semester course called Flex Mode. Julie Lyndon, Mark Swain designed and developed that course for faculty and staff to learn how to create their own Flex Mode courses. Flex Mode allows students to take classes kind of where they live, either in a traditional on-campus class environment, online, or as a fully asynchronous web course. So staff are starting to go through that and the expectation is to expand that at FM, starting in the spring of 2025. As far as the Rad Tech program, I thought it was something to note, this, this class of 2026, that will be 20 years of that program's existence. And we've talked a lot about the Rad Tech and the nursing programs in the past. I just think it's such a great program that the college offers. In 2024, there were 16 graduates that are fully employed and secured their positions even prior to graduating. Per diem wage ranges from $20 to $36 an hour, not including any overtime or holiday pay. So great work there. Class of 2024 fundraised and took a day trip to New York City and to the Bronx Zoo. Got to witness, I'm sure, a lot of great sights down in the city. Used a map to navigate a new area, learned about 11,000 species of animals and shared a meal together on Arthur Avenue. And if you're not familiar with Arthur Avenue, it is the true version of Little Italy in New York. I encourage you all to go there. Director of External Partnerships and Applied Learning, FM Internship Fair will be held on Tuesday, the 29th, from 12 to 1:30. As of this report, there are 10 companies registered and a lot of campus, or student interest on campus looking for spring semester internships. This past year, SUNY FM has 20, has this year, SUNY FMCC has 25 total stipends of $350 each to award to students successfully completing internships with guest cards for community students as well. And then lastly, in partnership with the Regional Chamber of Commerce and other partners, the college hosted the first Everybody Chips In Conference on September 26th. They welcomed a lot of state and local dignitaries. And at 75 business owners and organization representatives that attended, panelists from both state and local level presented funding opportunities, workforce development, and retention strategies. There are no questions, I think, including my report.
Do we have any questions for trustee Preston? Trustee Wilson is present for that.
Yes, it was.
He's a local dignitary.
I have a question. When you said that the fundraising was like 20,000 heard and you went to the zoo, was that the Rad Tech group that did all that?
No, that was just the class of 2024.
Class, oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to student affairs with trustee Perry.
All right. The full report is found in our packet, but here are some of the highlights. The admissions office has started their fall recruitment travel for the 24-25 recruitment cycle. On Saturday, on September 25th, the admissions, in conjunction with Tri-County Counselors Association, hosted the annual college fair and nearly 1,000 students from area school districts were bused here that day to participate. The FMCC Fall Open House will be held on Saturday, November 2nd. The Evans Library hosted information literacy sessions for two sections of the nursing 105 class. Forty-six students attended the sessions and librarian Dan Towne attended the human service 100 class. Dan continues to partner with faculty for their course student research and citation needs. On September 16th, STEP and C-Step co-hosted a career exploration webinar with Dr. Larnie Booker called So You Want to Be a Pediatrician. Dr. Booker discussed his journey about becoming a physician and what his job is like and tips for students considering a similar career. And then September the 22nd, or 27th, sorry, C-Step students also attended a field trip to the Landis Arbor Readup. Am I saying that right? It's spelled differently how I would say it. In Esperance, they participated in a guided hike led by a certified arborist, Fred, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Breglia, who discussed native plant species and invasive species as well as careers for arborists. The students enjoyed a lunch on the grounds, further developing their sense of belonging with fellow C-Step FMCC students. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Perry?
Just a comment that she mentioned that the Tri-County Council Fair, we had nearly 1,000 students. That's 1,000 different students that we had for CareerCon. So, you know, that, over the last couple of weeks, we've, we've had nearly 2,000 local A-12 students here on campus.
Oh, that's great.
Great.
Okay. If we have no questions, we'll move on to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the job.
Well, thank you. This has pretty much been anti-violence month, which sent some emails out to the employees here about the International Day of Nonviolence, also pointing out Rosh Hashanah, Kippur, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Bullying Prevention Month, just as close as I could get to Purple when I got up this morning. Because it's basically domestic violence, Purple Thursday, awareness about domestic violence. There were some nice activities that were going on out here too that I'll list for the next report. Those are pretty much the high, oh, the climate survey has begun that SUNY wants us to do, both employees and students are gonna do that. So we're gonna continue to encourage people to take that. And in my classes, you get extra credit for doing it. So I'll be talking more about that, again, at the college assembly. Any questions?
Any questions for, if not, thank you, sir. And we'll move on to diversity, excuse me, accreditation.
So we obviously spent the day with our, our team chair today. He had the opportunity to meet with the steering committee, spent a lot of time with me. Explore the best and learn more about, out here and as you heard, he's, he's, seems very dedicated to making sure that this is a success for us and that it's a helpful process and we're hopeful to that. We, we are in the closing phases of editing our draft. Once he gets a team in place, we'll be working with them to refine that draft. Until that draft is required for submission, which is about the end of January, we plan to submit that. So. That ends my report on accreditation, sir.
Thank you. I'll move on to personnel.
You, Mr. Chair, accreditation used to be 10, now is eight or seven?
Yeah, they changed it a couple of years ago.
Eight?
Eight years. Yeah. Our last, our last self-study was in 2006, our last visit was in 2016.
It seems like it was certainly.
It does. Yeah.
I always get stuck with it. So.
But they did change, you know, when it was 10 years, there was a periodic review process in the middle. So at the five-year point, there was a, a smaller report that had to be done. And then what they ended up doing was shortening the length of the cycle to eight years, eliminating that midpoint review. Now we do an annual report that.
Do you think that was helpful or no? Do you like that system better that they need to halfway, meaning after five years? And then if there is anything okay or not, ever.
I guess it's time to correct it.
Uh huh. Or now, what do you feel? How do you feel?
The, the most, so I'm gonna answer that differently today than I would have a year ago because one thing that they've done differently that started this year, and I don't know, magic, I, I think COVID is what magically changed it. But we, we do an annual. But we, we do an annual update report, which is fairly painless. But now that annual report leads to follow-up. So this year, we did three supplemental follow-up reports on our annual report. And that's, that's new. They're, but, but don't let me, they're not particularly onerous. I mean, they take time, but they're not, you know, they're not a hundred-page report that we have to turn in. I mean, they're, they're targeted and specific. And in our case, it was more or less clarifying points. So this year, we had to do a follow-up report on enrollment, as did, I think, I forget the number, 16 or 17 other New York colleges had to report on that. We also had to, to submit a follow-up report on our audit because what they do is they look at IPETS, which is the federal data system for higher education institutions. And three years ago, our audit was late for a variety of reasons, staff transitions, COVID, et cetera, et cetera. So at the time that we filed our IPETS report, there's a question that says, was your, did, did you have a qualified opinion on your audit? Or an unqualified opinion? Or you don't know? Those were the three options. We answered, we don't know, because we hadn't had the audit yet. So that, that raised a flag for them and they said, oh, well, well, you have to explain why that, why you answered that way. So we did. And then they said, okay, that's fine. Now give us the next three years of audits. Okay. I mean, that's, that's no problem either. And then one of the, I think it was 2021, the audit, we had, it wasn't a finding. It was, it was that we had not filed on our website the, in a timely fashion, you had to within 30 days, report your CARES Act spending. So he, he mentioned CARES Act. And the, there's a requirement that goes along with that, that every quarter you had to publish within 30 days of the end of that quarter. And I think we published it on day 31 or something like that, you know? And, and so, you know, then we had to go back and explain that. And again, our auditor was great. They wrote a letter and explained it and submitted it. So, you know, it's just busy work, but it's not, you know, it's not like we had to drop everything and own our entire attention to it.
In a way, in some ways, good documentation and this, that, whatever. But in other, that other way, when you look at it, it's sort of waste of time, all paperwork. And in, instead of concentrating on education.
Yeah. And it's Keep up with the honors.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, it's, it's, they're under, you know, so our accrediting agency, in order to remain an accrediting agency, is they're regulated by the federal government. They have requirements. They have to go through a similar self-study process with the federal government that we have to go through with them. So if they don't do the sorts of things that they're doing, they lose their ability to be an accreditor. Once upon a time, it was, we, we were required to be affiliated with our regional accreditor. They changed the law, I don't know, five years ago, something like that. So now, in theory, we could affiliate with any accrediting agency that's recognized and regulated by the government. We, we didn't like middle states anymore. We could go with, you know, North Central or, or with the Southern Association or anything like that. Why we would do that, I, I can't possibly explain to you why we would ever consider, you know, seeking new accreditation rather than re-accrediting ourselves with the same accrediting body? Because that's a much simpler process. But, but to, to the chair's point, I mean, we, it, it does seem like it's busy work, but it is. It's about accountability and transparency. So you know what? We didn't publish it on day 30. We published it on day 31. We own that and, and we explained that next time we wouldn't do it. You know, so, so on the one hand, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to both. This is what they're, they're doing. This is where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Personnel. I'll do Personnel, because Trustee, he isn't here. Step administration additions, rather, transfers, promotions, rechonchments, resignations, and/or retirements. Suzanne Johnson has rejoined the FM team as Step Specialist effective September 30th, 2024. Mayor Maya Franco has started, has started as administrative counselor. Maya was a graduate of Lemoine College. For the past three years, Maya's worked at Infinity Mondo LLC. During that time, she has held various roles, including administrative assistant, team leader, case management, procurement specialist, and delivery specialist. Jared Kershaw started as a computer service coordinator. Jared is a graduate of Salem Community College. And for the past two years, Jared has worked at Herkimer County Community College as a technical support technician. Kelly Hart has started as HR assistant. Kelly is a graduate of SUNY Brockport. For the past six years, Kelly has worked at Community Bank NA, where she's held the position of retail branch assistant and assistant mortgage loan consultant. Still in search for LPP Coordinator Full-Time, Grant-Funded. It's in the final stages. Associate Dean of Academic Affair Full-Time and Progress. Human Services Instructor Full-Time, Grant-Funded. Third shift Buildings and Grounds Custodian Full-Time. And that concludes the report. If there's any questions?
Just a comment that the LPP coordinator has been built in off her. She actually started, I think, last week. Okay, so. Making progress. I knew you were gonna ask me that.
Jenna Austin.
Is it Jen Austin?
Yeah, Alston.
Alstons. Okay. We'll move on.
You've got our directory.
There's no other questions. We'll move on to Policy with Trustee Wilson.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Chairman? We warmed up last Monday.
Okay. Do we need to go into executive session for a brief moment to get an update from President Dr. Miller? Nah? I have a motion to go into executive session. Trustee Landrio, all those in favor? Close during none? Thank you.
There will be no action in after, no, no business after.
Well, you, you can stay. Please stay. Trustee, we're in trust.
Trustee, yes.
Oh, okay. You'll have to leave.